Go ahead and get started on our work session agenda meeting. First item up for council work session tonight is discussion of water and sewer system development charges, Jason.
Let me get a little closer here. Say, let me get a little closer here.
I leave that on the copies. If y'all got copies, the STCs.
I left some for the mayor.
I don't think that's a copy when I'm looking at it.
That's for Florida, you got a copy?
We're getting it.
Thank you. I've seen it though.
Thank you.
What do you think? Yeah, this is. This is the changes in the system charges. System charges right now, if you look at the guidelines, what you have to pay for cap fees and all these other fees, it takes a computer to sign it and figure it out. Let's just go flat rate.
Jason, whenever you're ready, sir.
I really don't have a lot to say. I think we've all met on it and talked individually about it and how we arrived by these numbers and also in the comparison with the systems that are around us and then also some that are a little further out, but comparable in size by population served. So it's like Auburn or Montgomery. We use Madison as a comparison as well because they're the, I believe, the fastest growing area in the state right now. And it's very similar to what the ordinance that you all passed in 2020, it just simplifies. Instead of having a table to figure units served and all, that this with, for master meters especially, it gives a flat rate number. But it's all based on the 1500 for a three-quarter service, which is residential, single-family residential.
Jason, do you mind if I jump in for a minute? I think that probably we briefed most of the council on the system development charges, but one thing that's really difficult for us and what we spend a lot of time in utilities answering questions about is how to calculate what these charges are. And the current ordinance is very cumbersome. As, I mean, y'all have all looked at it, you know, how difficult it is to read. So this will allow us to put these flat charges on the website, give them to the operators, give them to the utility, the utility assistant, and everybody will be, you know, very, very much aware of what these charges are without having to do calculations and stuff. And it looks like it is a good, it's a good rate that Jason has established based on other areas around the state of Alabama and the other areas in Baldwin County.
Okay. So this in theory would reduce the incoming calls asking your staff to stop and calculate the rate.
Yes, sir. When they ask for a meter size upfront at the beginning of the process, we can give them this and then after we review the project, then it'll be up to the determination with our engineers and ourselves what size meter they actually do need.
Gotcha. Okay, and I do remember, did everyone have a chance to sit down with you, council?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Council, do y'all have any questions for Jason? So next step would be bringing this forth on the agenda. Okay. All right. Yep. I don't have any questions.
That was quick.
All right. Well, that was quick and easy.
Well, and I think too, just for people to understand who might be watching, this is, you compare this to an investment you're making in your system. Jason kind of explained it that way, I think, to all of us, and it helped me understand a little bit better. We have people who've been on the system for a long time, but when new people come in, they have to make an investment in the system as well. And so the system development charges, that investment that they're making into either our sewer system or water system.
Thank you, sir. So if that's all we have on that, the next item up would be committee updates. Councilman Martin?
Well, I met with the Fairhope Development Advisory Board, and I think we were still talking about that litter getter, that trap that we were putting into the little watershed right there about Win Dixie. The guy's supposed to come in and speak with us, I don't know his name, I can't remember his name, but he does represent, is supposed to come by and speak with us and explain it more. We also spoke on the deeds for the triangle and making sure that we got that right and explaining why we were getting the professionals involved before we actually stamped those deeds that they suggested and they were okay with that. As far as the recreation board, we have a member on the, we should see that on the agenda tonight. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Robinson, your committee updates.
Yes, sir. I've met with the historic preservation committee last week. They are currently working on, or actually they voted to amend their mission, which they will need, I think, Lisa, if I'm right, a change in the ordinance that states that.
That is correct.
And so they will be, I think, bringing that forward and trying to get that on the agenda. And it's to do the same thing that they've always done, but they have now encompassed educating the public as part of their purpose, as well as helping those who are seeking to go through the historic preservation system, maybe individual homeowners in Fairhope to get that done. So, that's all I have.
Councilman Boone?
Actually, I have no report.
All right. Councilman Burrell? Councilman Burrell, I hate to throw this on you right when you walked in the door, but we're just going through committee updates.
Okay. Yeah, Airport Authority meets tomorrow afternoon, so I have no update on that. I will say just real quick, kind of point these comments at the mayor, because I know she heard from them on the, one of the items on the agenda tonight. I just spoke to the citizen that contacted you regarding the, what do you call it, not speed bumps, but the, the little, not island.
Bump out.
Bump out, thank you. That's the word I was looking for, about the bump out. And so I've been on the phone back here talking too, so I'll get with you right after this meeting, okay? That's just my streets and traffic committee update.
I did not have any committee updates at this time, but just to circle back, Councilman Burrell, we just went over a discussion of the water and sewer development charges with Jason. There really weren't any questions. We had all had an opportunity to sit down with him previously and go over this, so I want to make sure, did Jack get a copy of that?
Yes. And I had also met with Jason as well, so I'm pretty well briefed. Sorry to miss it.
No, but if you did have any questions, we'd let you go ahead and circle back to that item.
You know, as I, I will comment that I was, I was talking to someone that does, they do developments around the country, and they were talking about, you know, the charges that they pay, and they're talking about, you know, not only do you have these types of charges, system development charges, but they have school charges and road charges. And, you know, we have impact fees, but they literally break this down. He was giving me the example of, I think they'd bought a piece of property for $400,000, $400,000, and it had, they had $380,000 worth of fees associated with that. And I thought, you know, as we are going to be discussing the moratorium this evening later, in ways at which, you know, you can slow development, you know, one of the things that I think I'd made a joke about, you know, build everything to withstand a 500 mile an hour wind or something and pretty much would stop it. But there are, there are tools to use to, to slow growth down, and I don't, I don't believe that this was, was put in place or is being considered being put in place necessarily to slow growth, but to recover monies that we need to, to improve upon our infrastructure. But this was on my mind because of the item on the agenda later tonight.
Thank you.
So it's certainly not unusual.
No, not at all. Let's see. Seems a little quick, but we're already ready for department head updates, so if you've got something to bring forward. Kim, any update? Richard?
Just the agenda items, we'll get to those in a minute.
Okay.
Kind of quiet.
I hear you. Pat, anything?
Agenda items, if you want those.
Yeah, if y'all want, you can, you can go ahead and come up and address agenda items at, yes, ma'am.
I would like to introduce my assistant city clerk.
Oh, please.
Anyway, this is Jenny Wilson, and she started today as my assistant city clerk, and these are your council members.
Well, welcome to Fairhope, Jenny.
Thank you so much. I am very excited to be here.
Well, we're glad to have you, and I know Lisa is too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for being here.
You get tranked by the best, don't you?
Yes, sir.
I have agenda items, basically 30 through 34, and then skip over to 36. Agenda item 30 would be to approve the funding for the new fitness equipment for the recreation department. All of our spin cycles and fitness equipment is at or around 12 years old and in need of updating. 31 is the necessary pedestals for Fairhope docks. That'll give us the remainder of the pedestals we need for power to the rest of the slips. 32 is the LED lighting package for the new ball fields we're building at Belana. Item 33 would be the LED lighting package for the high school softball field at Founders 34 would be the LED lighting package for the pickleball courts at the tennis center. And then skipping over to 36, basically, this is a green sheet on the entire project that we are currently working on. We're doing the majority of the work in-house as far as the construction of the fields. This is basically to give us the green light to move forward with purchasing of irrigation supplies and dirt and sod and everything else that we need.
All right. I got a few questions, and I'll go ahead and try to get these out of the way before. So the bikes roughly replacing the different spin cycles, I know 12-year-old bike is pretty ancient with the amount of wear and tear they get. Do you have any idea how many bikes or how much of the fitness equipment's being replaced?
I would say the majority of it. I don't, I don't know the exact numbers.
Gotcha. So the majority of that equipment?
All these spin cycles will be replaced.
Okay. And, all right, and then the pedestals for Fairhope docks, that's the last 16, and do we have any kind of timeframe on how long? I mean, I know we've got a lot of items on here where we're ordering things because of the lead time required to actually get those items in.
Yeah, right. Most of what we're hearing is eight to 12 weeks delivery, almost everything.
Okay, so that's same, same for the LED lighting for the ball fields?
That's correct.
Okay.
And of course, you know, if we need to hold the delivery off of the product, they can store it for us for a period of time if need be.
Okay. And then the last item was on the ball fields, just for the, for the public. How many of the new baseball fields is this going to cover, the amount being requested?
That would be all four of the new ones that we're building.
So we've got all four fields. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions, Pat, while he's up here?
Pat, the lighting, I think, I guess what you were just asking about, Jimmy, is the lighting that we're talking about here will just be for the four new fields?
Uh huh.
Okay. What would, do we have an idea of what it would cost to replace the lighting on the current fields?
Yes, I have those numbers, and they're all in the average of $40,000 to $60,000 per field.
But the package for this would include the base and everything, that they're mounted on, that whole structure, so that's why the cost on this is so much higher?
Right, because we're putting up new poles with these. The, the older fields have the newer concrete poles, so we would just be switching out the hardware on those.
Gotcha.
So, so these lights will have like a keypad, from what I read, and some type of automation timing and really neat stuff.
That's correct.
It's a harness that slides up the pole, it's all in there.
Nice.
So it's really cool stuff.
Yeah, we would preset the times for the lights to come on and go off, just like we do at the soccer complex.
Yep, and that would save us money, you know, because sometimes we leave lights on.
Just like at home, right?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Richard, I know you, we got bypassed you a second ago, but if you want to cover any agenda items?
And there was one thing I probably should report on, we're still doing the paperwork, but we did, for the third time, advertise and open the Arts Alley bid, and we did get two competitive responsive bidders. So I was working on the paperwork to go up through FTA today on that, so hopefully, maybe first of the year, you will see that, that bid to award that, so we're excited about that. And the good news is that the, the winning bid was about $400,000 less than the last time we opened bids on this and only had one responsive bidder, so that's always a good sign.
So it's worth, worth rebidding, I guess.
Well, and, and that was the thing, the, the federal folks could not contemplate just one bidder. They were, there was no way that they were going to let us try to move forward, they got, had to see. And the good news, the two bids that it opened were within 10% of each other, which tells you that you can determine that's a competitive response, so excited about that.
Did, did the winning bid from last time bid again or not?
Came in second, yes.
Oh, okay.
So they came down on a considerable amount then?
They did, and, and part of it was, they had to submit a bid because they, they did not get response from some of their subcontractors, so they just had to put a number that they knew covered it, so they were, they had a little bit of a blind bid in there too, and this gave them enough time to finally get a response from their, their electrical subs and things like that, so it tightened their number up. So it's exciting. I hate that the original bidder didn't get it, because that was a good company, but the company that did, we've done business with, with the city, and they've done a good job in the past as well, so. So that's kind of exciting news, and, and I don't want to jinx it, but I think it's actually going to move forward in, in the coming year.
Okay.
Counsel, I have item number 17, which is award a bid to Blade Construction for fells and avenue and pier avenue drainage, relates repairs and improvements. And the honest question to ask is, well, why wasn't this budgeted in advance? If you'll recall, I think the actual Monday we passed the budget, we had a five-inch rainstorm that morning. I didn't find out about these sinkholes till Tuesday after the budget had passed, but we got a real good price response, even though we only had one, one bid response, and, and literally, when we looked at it, we don't even think we could do it for that price. So that's basically two areas, two, two blocks on two different streets in Fruit and Nut to replace the drainage from inlet box to inlet box, including new inlets, and it is my recommendation we award that. Item number 18 is our second NRCS EWP project. We are asking to reject and to allow us to negotiate, and the reason be, we did end up with one bidder. It's the same bidder that did win the Quell Creek, and they've done a great job on that. But even at the bid opening, the bidder informed us that the, one of the big cause factors is the geotechnical engineer specified a sand that could only be sourced out of the pit in Atmore, and they said that there was instantly a $70,000 savings on this project if we could source it locally from a pit up on Friendship Road. We've been proactive, we had that sand tested, and it does meet the requirement, so we know that that savings are there. The other thing is, with that work, the in situ soils that are there right now, the project contemplates, a lot of that is removed and not reused. We tested, did some additional testing there, and we'll be able to reduce the amount of exported borrow to come in. So we do want to bring that back to you, because we think we can get that price down considerably. And with that, if we can have all those numbers to discuss with the mayor maybe tomorrow, we're hoping maybe to resubmit it for a little Christmas present and get it walked on the next agenda, but we'll, we'll leave that up to y'all to make that decision. Because we are on a little bit of a timeline, we have got to have this project substantially complete by the end of March. There is a chance we can get an extension, but they don't really like doing that, so that's project number 18. It's just a book, a housekeeping item. Number 19, as you know, we had a, that same day in reference that caused the sinkholes in the Fruit and Nut. We had a flooding event at the fire station, this is the putting back together that fire station, and there is an insurance claim on file, and I think the green sheet denotes we expect a $5,000 deductible, is that correct? And we are recommending to award that, that repair to seal quality. Number 22 is routine budget, that is two new replacement out front lawn mowers. Item 24 is, is ours as well. This is a new purchase of a truck with a four-yard concrete mixing unit on it, so that we can start doing that in-house, and that was also approved as part of the budget. And then 35 is a compact utility loader for the streets department, that was also part of the approved budget. And then Mr. Burrell is actually much more up to date on this, since I was unable to attend the last Traffic Safety and Control Committee, but 41, there are some recommendations, and I had a little bit of discussion with my assistant who attended on my behalf, but I think we do need to look at the first two bullet points and make sure the geometrics work there, because I do know my concern on North Engle Side is that that's a pretty narrow right of way, and we have already got some conflicts with sidewalks and, and things of that nature, and with putting chokers or a bunch out, a bulb out, or a pinch point, or even a chicane, you're concerned about, you know, causing a potential with, with trucks hitting curbs and things of that nature, but, and the third bullet point, I don't, I, I don't know what type of sign they're, they're asking for, but adding signage shouldn't be a bit of problem. So that's, those are my agenda items.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
You want me to cover that while we're at work session?
Yeah, I was just about to ask if you wouldn't mind jumping in on that.
So, the citizens that come to the, the Streets Committee with petitions and then basically they were wanting speed bumps on these, I'm talking to the first two bullets, they wanted speed bumps, and in fact, on the second bullet, I believe everybody on the street, including the person that called or emailed us and said they didn't want speed bumps, had signed the petition for speed bumps. So I said, well, you ought to be happy that we voted against putting speed bumps on your street, because we didn't feel that it was necessary to put speed bumps there, although that, you know, every street in town, if you put out a counter, or if you put out something that measures the speed, you're going to get that one off. Somebody's going to come through there at some point in time during that two-week or three-week period, and they're going to be doing 70, where you think they can only do 20. And I think in this case, somebody may have been doing 90 on this street. So anyway, we, we felt like something needed to be done, and we thought about, since the city owns the property across the street from the residence on, I'm talking to bullet number two right now, on Mershon, that since the city owns the parkland across the street, you wouldn't have to put a bump out on somebody's property, we could put it on our own property. And, and when I spoke to this, this gentleman that was concerned about this, he said that, that he would be okay with that, but the, the people along the street should have some input as to what that looks like. And I, if my memory is correct, in that meeting, that is exactly what we said, is that the citizens, we can meet with them and maybe determine the best location and the best way. So when you think about a bump out, it doesn't have to protrude eight foot into the street. It could be, you know, one foot or two, two foot, but we were thinking it would also beautify the street if you use a bump out. It's a visual of a narrowing of the street. Now, to your point on number one, Mr. Johnson, you may be, you may be right, you know, you and mayor may get together, y'all may consult and determine that that's not a good place for a pinch point, but we didn't find it a good place to put speed humps on that street either. And, you know, we talk about, we have long, long discussions, everything from how far apart you have to put the speed bumps, you know, if you put them too close to one end of the street or the other, the people on the street that want them always want them away from their house and at the end of the street, in which case you kind of defeat the purpose. So we did talk about all that, and we thought that the, the pinch points would, would beautify the streets, it would be something that's, you know, not unattractive like a speed hump might be, although you can build some decorative speed tables and things. We just thought it would be viewed as part of a beautification effort while trying to slow the traffic down. We did, we did believe that something needed to be done at those locations. I think the data did reveal to us. So the gentleman actually was okay if we went ahead and passed it as is, as long as they do have the promised input on what and where.
To ask you a quick question on that point, number two, on Mershon, when you, when you're installing a bump out, and I know we've got some park, parkland there that you could put it on there, do you normally have it symmetrical, where it's extending from both sides, or would you just have it on one side of the street?
We were thinking it would only be necessary on one side, because as you point out, that's a very narrow street, and, and that's why we, we chose to do that, because we could do it on our property, and it wouldn't be so intrusive on somebody else's front yard.
Okay, but the, and it would have, it would slow, the effect would also slow that other side of the street?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's just any narrowing of the street naturally will slow you down.
Slow both sides, okay.
Right. Hopefully.
Okay.
Chief, does you want to add to that by chance?
So why didn't we want to do the bumps? I mean, not the bump outs, but these, yeah, the brick?
We just thought it was a, you know, a short quaint street that probably, it was kind of borderline. And I think it started with the discussion on North Engle Side, we didn't really think that speed humps were appropriate there, so we came up with the bump out idea, which kind of carried on to the next one. We were just, we really didn't think that it needed speed humps, we thought, just get them to slow down a little bit with a feature that will, that will make the, a street scene better, would be more palatable to, to everybody involved, and do the same thing.
So if the bump out doesn't work, would you go next with a bump out and speed bumps? Just a question.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't talk about what would happen if it didn't work. We, we, we're hoping that works.
All right, thank y'all.
Tax trips or something like that in the street, I don't know.
Appreciate that.
Council president, if I could, if I could call Electric up next, I want to introduce our new Electric superintendent, Jade Fleming, who's joining us tonight.
I thought he was an attorney or something back then.
Not an attorney. Jade is about two weeks on the job, right? Two weeks, two weeks on the job. Jeremy is doing a great job showing him around and showing him the ropes, but he comes to us from Georgia Power by way of Troy, so he's got a lot of experience and glad to have him here and think he's going to be a great addition to the team.
Welcome aboard.
Good to meet you, gentlemen. Looking forward to working with you.
Yes, sir.
As far as what's going on with Electric Department right now, we are working on the Morphe Street Station, it is coming out of the ground, CILB pulled back in last week. They're actually supposed to be starting physical digging today. I have not been out there, but I'm probably going to go tomorrow. We also have been working on the AMEA project out here. See, it's virtually completed, but it's like it's going to be a good project. We have two items on the agenda, from what I understand are budgeted. One is item 15, which is to award the bid to East Bay Electric for the distribution and 46 KV work, the line addition, the approvals for Electric Department. And then item number 29, which is to award the bid for the VT SCADA to Jeremy, if you've got any comments, let me know, for the replacement of the SCADA system that I think was damaged during the hurricane, and so that would take care of us.
Okay. Any questions for Jay, especially regarding that item number 15? No, that's just a large dollar amount, it is a budgeted item.
And that is part of all the electric upgrades with the, along with the substations, was that 46 KV line?
So there wasn't a budget, there's not a number on the green sheet as to the amount of the budget, it's just what the bid is. Did we, did we have an estimate, and is that?
On the green sheet?
Yeah.
Is, does it not say that it came in?
No, it's just project budgeted, and it's got that.
It's part of that whole collective budget.
Maybe, yeah, maybe that's why. Is that why, Kim, it's just kind of coming out of the big collective, you know, roughly $12 million?
No, we, Jim, we had $2 million this year budgeted for this project. This is 900,000 of it, the Morphe Substation, hopefully it'll finish, and that'll be probably the remainder of that.
Okay. All right, that's why.
Thank you.
Hey, Jeremy, did you want to touch on the SCADA system?
Yes.
Sorry.
My bad. Yeah, so you- Yeah, so you guys know we had surveillance for a long time. We was paying the, the service maintenance every year, twenty something thousand dollars every year like that. With, if we didn't pay for it this year, we let that lapse over so we don't have the SCADA system really. We're still using it, but we really need this in place for our substations, for reliability and all that stuff. We're going, we decided to go VT SCADA. Man, I tell you, man, you just can't find, I tell you, silence your phones, please. We, so we, we, we decided to go VT SCADA. They know our system. They've got a good redundancy and they're going to be really reliable. The guy who's also installing it will be helping us. He's very familiar with our system already. This is all going to tie in with the water sewer, water department and the sewer department and everything like that. So it's going to be a good, a good product for us. Like I said, we budgeted it so hopefully you guys can prove that so we can get it rolling. We need it pretty bad.
So, so letting that other one lapse was all intentional? You were planning on making a switch?
It was and was not at the same time. We weren't sure who we going with. We just knew we didn't want to go.
With the same people. Gotcha. Okay.
I got a question about the SCADA. I've asked this one before and I'll ask it every year or two. And Jason, it may be something that you have to answer. Do you guys maintain, does electrical department maintain all of the SCADA, even for water and lift stations and?
We used to. Roscoe has moved over to the lift station part, water part.
So we do have a SCADA technician in the water department. So my question is this, you know, we had an issue, and it's been years ago, it's been seven or eight years ago where a lift station, I forget what happened, hit by lightning, something happened, lost power. And the SCADA system couldn't report trouble. So I thought, well, why don't we have the opposite of reporting trouble? We'll just have a ping saying all clear that comes in. And if you quit receiving it, you investigate because you know something's not right. And if we had that, then we'd send a technician out to say, wait a minute, we're not getting an all clear and you find the problem.
So let me elaborate on that, Mr. Burrell, Councilmember Burrell. So being the one that installed all that stuff and, and was working on that, I personally was responsible for the electric department. And so that was my primary target was keep us running. I started working with the water department, wet wells and lift stations. Well, we decided just because of that fact was, once it lost power, we didn't have a clue what was going on because it couldn't report. So we put an alarm on the phase monitor that would tell it when it lost power, would trip, would tell us. So if they went in there and killed the station to work on a pump, it would alarm SCADA and let us know. So to answer your question, that is the way.
It does. I might have a follow-up question though. We have, sometimes we have false signals and we, and we kind of get used to those. And we think, oh, we always get that false signal. How often do we investigate that just to make sure that, well, we know that thing's malfunctioning? It's been malfunctioning for, I don't know, make up a time, three months and we've ignored it. But now there's a problem, but we don't know it.
You can answer that. When you get a, you ain't getting a false signal in the electric, you're going to know your power's out, you're going to get phone calls. So that's going to happen. But on their stuff, I'm hoping they check their stuff on a regular basis. But I'm not going to speak for him. He can.
None of that's happened in years that I'm aware of, but it's been mentioned.
It happens.
The other thing I just want to mention is getting SCADA in place everywhere is really going to help us if we move forward with an outage center, which is what my, my goal is, is to move forward with that outage center and have, you know, customer service operators in there, people watching that twenty-four seven so we can monitor our utility systems. Also people who are trained, if there's an outage and when people start calling in to know what they're looking at. So this is just the first step in, in really advancing our utilities to where they really should be.
So then outage center would be centralized for all the utilities?
It would be. It would be.
We should put it at police dispatch. Kidding. Welcome, sir. Thank you. Thank you very much, Jay.
Welcome aboard. Let's see. Jason, come on up.
Yeah.
Back again.
Yes, sir.
I will elaborate on what Mr. Burrell said. We are believe, are working on having a presentation for you all on the SCADA. The VT SCADA I'm very familiar with and that's what we're, are going to use on our water and the wastewater plant side first. We've gotten our budget for both. But the wastewater plant first because the underware system that's in place down there now is very much outdated. So the VT SCADA is a lot more complex than the system we're using currently down there. And also the, what we're using on our lift stations is Missions now. And that's what I really want to do a presentation with y'all. It's a simple web-based SCADA system. But it's stuff that we can do in-house. We buy the parts local from a vendor and our electrician, Christopher Safely, he can install. So we're doing that. We're down to fifteen stations having SCADA on all of them. And he's done every one of them. So he, you know, he gets, had a boy for me every day. And so it's a year, I'm on the email, so I get an email if any alarm goes off at any station. And it goes out to all, all of our employees that's got a city, either tablet or phone. So the on-call person, they rotate the tablet, which is iPad, and they get the information as well. They are checked. You have to write off on like, he said, a phase monitor, that can only be reset by going to the station. And you can't just click a button. You have to go to the station. So there's several, the high level alarms for the wet well, you have to go to the station to reset that alarm or it just keeps sending it. So there is checks and balances. If they are checked and if they're not, then we go to the person that's on-call that didn't do it. But we've not had any issues with somebody checking the stations.
So fif- fifteen left to be hooked up? Do we have seventy-something?
You have seventy-nine currently. And any day now we'll have eighty because of North Hills, that second phase that's going in now, there's a lift station in it, is approved previously.
Okay.
So on the last two or three, I guess three weeks really, we have been bombarded with water main breaks. And I know social media has tore us up. And Jessica's done a great job getting, you know, social media is a two-edged sword. We put out when there's a water outage, but then people speculate what caused it. You know, like on Seneca ninety-eight and Cannon Road, one, no standout. Those were saddles that failed that were put in years ago. And the salt water and the corrosion is, you know, eat the bolts out of the, corroded the bolts that hold the band and they go to leaking. And we have to shut the water off to replace it. The material we're putting in today is stainless, either epoxy coated or nylon coated, so to withstand that type of corrosion. And we had contractor, I think three of the breaks were contractor related. Two of them were county related for cleaning out ditches, so. But our guys, you know, I think for what, Mayor, five days, I think we've had, our crews might have got ten hours sleep in a five day period. So dedicated and they got the water back on as quick as they could.
Well, we, we appreciate you guys doing that. I know that's not easy. Do you have any items here on the, on the agenda?
I've got one quick question.
Yes, sir.
We, our department, I guess you'd say inherited the boring. It's change of the budget. And we sent four guys to school to get certified in Birmingham. One was the, the, Mr. Powell that we got from Electric and then we sent three guys. So we actually said, we've got a second boring crew now that's actually boring. So it took, they do mostly on our side, they do mostly water. They do do some of the sewer, but we're also available with that second crew for the other utilities that Mr. Powell can't get to. So we're accomplishing, I think, a record from what I've been told on how many bores that we can get done and working with the other departments. But by doing that, we're a little shorthanded equipment-wise, but we're making out and doing the best we can. But I do have a question before I, I submit anything to waste anybody's time with a green sheet or anything. On our budget, we had, I mentioned this before, on repurposing trucks, we've got a pickup left in our budget that we weren't going to purchase this year. And by moving people around, and I think it's budgeted for thirty thousand. And only thing I would like to ask you all's opinion on, if you would, it's under in vehicles and equipment, if you would entertain the idea of letting us use part of those funds to purchase a dump body for a truck that we've already got, which is a two-ton truck. And then the other two-ton truck that we replaced with a new vehicle, we're moving it over to the boring department, pull the big boring rig and getting rid of an old tandem truck that the city's got. I think it's a nineties model. So we're doing the best we can and I just wanted to ask the opinion before I move forward and do anything.
I don't, I don't have an issue with that, Council. How do y'all feel about that repurposing and any idea what the cost would be for?
I've got three prices. One is state purchasing, the other two is the buyer's group. They're all three local to Ballin', or, I'm sorry, one's in Ballin County, two's in Mobile. So it's in that twenty-two to twenty-five range.
Okay.
So twenty-two would be, be the lowest, lowest.
I'd be okay with that.
And that's repurposing a two thousand and sixteen, I think, Freightliner from an old, from a utility body to a dump body, so.
Sounds, sounds like you got support across the board up here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jessica, you up next or, oh, I'm sorry.
So real quick, the only thing I really wanted to talk to you about was Church Street. I was hoping Richard would cover it and he chose not to, so I will talk to you about Church Street. We expect to have the Magnolia and Church intersection opened up by the end of this week barring any kind of major, major rain event. Hopefully that's not going to happen. But you will begin to see that getting buttoned up. So that will give us a little bit more movement to, or room to move right there for traffic. I hope it'll alleviate some of the traffic that we've seen downtown. But that is a big deal. I mean, you know that this has been a painful project, especially with all of the water that we've seen this year. So it's a, it's a good step forward in the right direction. Richard? Richard approves.
What's, what's, what's the next intersection that might be?
So we'll stay here in this block between Magnolia and Fair Hope for a little bit of time. I mean, you know, they're going in and they're replacing the high pressure gas line that goes first. And then additionally, the water and wastewater and stormwater drains. And so obviously that's pretty extensive. I know we've probably talked about it here multiple times, but as we continue to move toward Fells, it is going to become a little bit easier to handle. So barring any major surprises.
Okay. Anything on the agenda?
Nothing on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. So you got a couple.
All right. I do. First, I want to let y'all know that the shuttle hit the streets in downtown Fair Hope today. We're really excited to have that here in our central business district. So for the week of the thirteenth and the twentieth, we're going to take it out for a little test spin, kind of get the kinks out. So everybody kind of bear with us as we work through this. Right now, we actually have a part-timer who is helping us take this on for the next two weeks. So Mary, so if y'all see her out, wave her down and thank her. She's doing a great job today. It was her first day. We're going to run Monday through Friday, ten to two for right now to kind of just, like I said, work out the kinks. But we're excited for it to be a permanent fixture in downtown Fair Hope and to kind of get everybody's input on this project and moving forward. And Mayor, do you have anything to add to that?
No, just, you know, thank you Paige for working that out. The shuttle, obviously if you haven't seen it, it's got a huge six-foot lift that folds out. So the one reason why we decided to let a part-time employee do that, Michael Johnson, our safety officer, is also helping because it's going to be very hard for somebody to navigate downtown and, and put out that lift, if, put out the ramp if somebody does need the handicap accessibility part of the shuttle. So we are trying to figure out where good places to stop are and all that kind of good stuff. So thank you Paige for putting that together and I really appreciate, Ms. Mary, right?
It is. It's Mary.
Yeah, Mary agreeing to do that for a couple of weeks for us.
And we do have a phone number associated with it and we've posted it all over our social media and sent it out, or it will be going out in our newsletter, correct? Tomorrow, Jessica? Yes. And so they will be able to pick up the phone and call the number. We did give a lot of folks today a ride from, who were just parking in the parking deck and heading into work or heading downtown to shop. So that was great. So like I said, if y'all have any input on that, we would be gladly willing to take any kind of comments or any concerns y'all have on that. But we're excited.
Where is it being stored?
We, so right next to the street sweeper, our parking deck street sweeper down there on the third level of the park, on the very bottom level of the parking deck, we just kind of extended that bay.
Did we put that fence around it?
And the fence is around it and it's locked up there and charges. And we, yeah, and it charges fairly quickly.
It has the onboard charger, I believe.
It does.
So all it needs is a heavy-duty extension cord, right?
It is. And we've already got that hardwired in. Our Kevin Wadsworth already worked on that. So we've got, it's, it's all ready to go. So, and we charged it for a short amount of time today and it, it got it full back up to a hundred percent.
And it's only going to operate in the CBD for now?
Correct.
And then, I mean, the, the idea was to try to encourage people to use the parking deck, right?
Correct. So we're excited about that. And then I do have items number twelve and item number thirteen, both referring to our New Year's Eve celebration in downtown Fair Hope. Again, that'll be on Friday night, eight-thirty to midnight. So the first is the resolution for the professional service for the contract for our fireworks display, both approved or approved in the budget. And it's actually, I believe, five hundred dollars less than the budgeted amount. So, and then secondly is our contract with Music Garden for Blackberry Breeze, which is going to be the band for New Year's Eve on the main stage, starting at eight-thirty. It's eighties, nineties to current hits. So again, that came in, I think, five hundred dollars less than our approved budget. So if y'all got any questions?
Nice job. Any, any questions for Paige regarding New Year's? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. Thanks, Jeff. Do you have anything?
I've got four agenda items. The first one being number, number fourteen, it's just a yearly renewal on mobile radios, majority of them being the police department. We do have handful that we have set aside for emergency uses for utilities, but that's just a yearly renewal on those. Next item would be item twenty-six, more in need of a new backup server. The one that we have is currently over five years old. The, we can no longer get hardware maintenance on it. So if we, you know, if a hard drive goes out, we can't just order a new one at this So we're, we're going to be purchasing a new server for, for backup purposes.
Okay.
Number twenty-seven, yearly renewal of our Office Three, well, I guess it's called Microsoft three sixty-five licensing gives our users capability to have email in the Microsoft Office Suite. The, and the last item is number twenty-eight. This is for the police department, replacing the dispatch recorder. This, this piece of equipment is about eight years old. It's starting to have issues. We've had a couple of parts replaced and its hardware's no longer supported either. And so it's just end of life and we're going to be replacing that. So that, that records all dispatch, actually all police radio conversation and telephone for, when you call dispatch, it records that.
Okay. Any, any questions for Jeff regarding twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight or agenda item?
I got a question considering, concerning item fourteen.
Fourteen, sure.
It's, it's under budget by about twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Is there something missing or did we just get that good of a deal?
No, no. This is actually, that's a good question. No, no, this is actually, that's a good question. Uh, this is, this is part one of two. The, the second part will be, uh, the yearly renewal on the dispatch consoles themselves. And for some reason, they split it off this year, um, so we, I'll, I'll make a note of that in next year's budget, but, um...
So a little misleading to the council to put that your $20,000 under budget when it's only a partial purchase.
Well, I do, yeah, I thought we were, I recall speaking with somebody about that to note that. I, I, you know, I apologize, that note didn't make it to that, but yeah, the, the second part will be, um, the, uh, the dispatch consoles themselves. So we will be using the remainder of that budget.
Okay.
Yeah, it does look a little misleading.
It's, it's in the, it's in the notes.
All right.
It's in the notes.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay.
I'll still say it's, it's misleading to me, okay?
No, I agree. I mean, I, they usually, they usually lumped it in each year, but for some reason, they separated this year. So we'll, we'll be sure to budget that correctly next year.
Yeah, so maybe when we present, uh, that part two of that, we can, we can also have a consolidated how, how we came in for the total, total bid. That'd be great. Any other questions for Jeff?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Chief? How are you this evening?
I am good. How are y'all?
Doing good.
I have item 21, which is a budget item, uh, to purchase three 2021 Ford police interceptors.
Only item?
That is it.
Okay. So on these, um, we got the budget of 186, the cost is 133. Is there, and that, is there $50,000 worth of upgrades after you receive the vehicles?
That is correct. We have about $40,000 worth of equipment that will go into it.
What is the new, what is the Ford police interceptor? We, we've been buying Tahos so long that?
We weren't able to get the Tahos this year. We're still waiting on the vehicles from last year. But the interceptors are basically like the Explorer.
It's like Explorer, okay. Is that the only item you have?
That's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Any other questions for Chief?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief Ellis, do you have anything?
Good evening. Uh, we've been, fire department's been steady. We ran 114 calls last month, um, and over the past, uh, couple of weeks, we had four firefighters finish their certified volunteer firefighter course. They joined our ranks of certified firefighters. Also had, uh, three others, I'm sorry, four others, uh, create some, or finish some other certification classes, and we're waiting on test results for those. So we're still out training, trying to serve, serve the city, even though we're towards the end of the year. Also, we have item 25, which is a generator for Station 1, if anybody has any questions about that.
Any questions regarding the generator for Station 1? All right, doesn't look like you got any questions. Thank you, Chief. Let's see, Jeremy, you've been trying to get up here.
Yeah, jumping the gun a little bit earlier.
That's all right.
Oh, quick update on the gas. The biggest project we have going on right now is the roundabout at 13 and 32. We should finish that up tomorrow. Um, we did have to move our 200-pound PSI gas line. So we've done all that in-house. It's been a little lengthy project, but hope to wrap that up tomorrow. Quick little tidbit that came out in the magazine, and they're kinda old numbers. They used the end of 2019. I guess because COVID, they didn't, they hadn't had all the new information. But we are the 152nd largest gas company in the United States, private and public. There's roughly 100 individual gas systems in Alabama, just to kinda tell you how many there are across the country. So I was quite surprised to find us in the top 200, but we are, a- as of right now, the 152nd largest gas company with over 11,000 gas customers. We have closer to 13,000 now, so should put us in the top 150 in the next year. So we do have one agenda, one item on the agenda. Is it, it is budgeted. We had three truck, three trucks in the budget. We've already purchased two of them, and this is the third truck that was budgeted.
Okay, trying to find that.
This truck was originally on last year's budget.
Here we are, uh, item number 20.
Correct, it was a rollover from last year. So last year, they could not get the trucks, and so we had to put it in the budget and roll it over to this year.
All right, and, um, another one of these where the, the price is a good bit lower than the, than the budgeted amount. Is there some add-on outfitting you gotta do?
Right, it was gonna be a full four-door truck. Obviously, Tim's having trouble getting trucks right now, so we're just having to get what we can get. That's gonna be the crew cab instead of the full four-door. And it was originally supposed to be a Dodge four-door last year, and when they failed to produce the Dodges, we rolled the price over, and so this is what Tim can find for us. So a little bit of give and take right now.
Yeah, well, that, that price seems pretty good, though. Okay.
I don't wanna say it, but they find that one make of vehicle seems to be a lot less than another make of vehicle.
Don't get it, but, any, any questions for Jeremy?
Thank you, Rob.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, Travis Hunter, who's up?
Good evening. Um, we all only have eight and nine on the agenda for tonight, which is what we brought to you guys in the work session a couple of weeks ago. The policy regarding certifications and trainings, we added the council's recommendations to that on kinda limiting how many you can do a year and in your career. We added that terminology. And then item number nine is the travel policy that we discussed in the work session a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, we added those recommendations of, you know, kept to a minimum, cost kept to a minimum or at the lowest rate possible. So other than that, they're pretty, pretty much the same as what you saw. We just added those recommendations from you all. Any questions?
Any questions? Does anybody need a refresher on that? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hunter? You don't have anything tonight, E?
No, no, we're, uh, got two public hearings and that's it, so if y'all have any questions, I'll, uh, I'm here. Uh, just a couple of quick updates. Um, we do have this Thursday, a, a training course that all of our Board of Adjustment members and Planning Commissioners, Mayor, Councilman Martin, will be a part of. It's capso training, land, some land use law and, and processes. That'll put us out of the office, although our planning staff will be out of the office. So just kinda wanna publicly announce that in case you get any calls while we haven't returned a call that day. That will be a pause, um, and really, the only, only other agendas I have are public hearings, so if y'all have any questions on those, uh, to rezoning cases or conditional annexation and rezoning cases.
All right.
Or any, or anything else on that.
Any, any questions before, uh, before the public hearing opens up later? None? All right, thank you, sir. See, Eric? Nothing? All right, let me just go back through here real quick. Um, the ordinance, uh, on the moratorium, obviously, we'll have a conversation on that. Uh, Lisa has already sent everyone the, uh, regular city council meeting scheduled for 2022. Did anybody have any questions about that? Any conflicts?
I'm sure we missed something.
Oh, I'm sure.
Well, we do, Lisa.
Yeah. I, I, I took a good look at it. I tried to find anything missing. I, I didn't see anything at the time, so. Um, next is the, uh, resolution for the, supporting the passage of the legislation for the Alabama's underwater forest. I think everybody's probably familiar with that, but... Does anyone have anything to add to that, or? I think everyone's probably familiar with this. We had a documentary done on that. Let's see, item number 16, I didn't, I missed this apparently, uh, one-to-one communications for one source for utility departments. And we may have skipped over you inadvertently, Kim, early on. I'm sorry, 'cause you didn't have anything, so you may have had some budget items.
So what we put out to bid was our printing service that's for our utility bills. Um, it hadn't been put out for bid for several years. Our current vendor, um, we've had some issues with them being delayed. Um, the company was actually bought out, and so in the transition, we, we've had some issues. So I thought it was time for us to put that out for bid. Um, so what you see there is just an estimated of the billing, that's, that truly is just the printing of it, um, of those invoices. You have any questions on that?
How, how does that relate to the, I guess, the current costs we're spending on printing those invoices?
Very similar.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, you know, our hope is to save some, um, on the invoice cloud. Invoice cloud, we're currently right now in the transition of that. Hope to go live with invoice cloud in March. So, um, you know, hopefully in the next budget year, we'll, we'll start seeing some of the printing costs go down more. Customers that we can get to go to e-billing, that will reduce the printing cost.
And is item number 23 under you?
Yes, 23. That is, um, our sweeper cleaner that's in the warehouse. Um, the current machine, um, is, it's probably pushing 15 years, um, old. That's, um, unable to keep the warehouse clean, so this is to replenish it. It's just a little bit above the budget. I mean, it's just based on when we got the estimate, when we were putting the budget in compared to what the price is today.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Kim on that item? Nobody? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, looks like the, the next item I have is, um, 37. Marcus, I think you would cover that if we had any questions. And this is, uh, the master agreement for, um, Portico. And it's just the easement.
It's a master easement agreement between Portico and 4U City.
They had some minor adjustments that you've already reviewed. Everything looks good.
There are minor adjustments made by the single-tax colony today that did not affect us at all. And what, I think you've got a revised version on your desk right now.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, thank you. Um, let's see, item number 38, was I told that one's pulled? Okay. Um, item number 39, rec board appointment. Corey, you cover that if we got any questions?
Yes.
And, uh, Lisa Atchley's, I know she's served on some other boards here before, so, um, everyone on rec board supports the recommendation?
As far as I know.
Okay.
I think there were two abstentions on the vote.
Okay. Um, and then item number 40 is the Fairhope Public Schools Commission appointment and reappointment. Reappointing Kerry Mclemore and Robin Coleman and appointing Joe Kelly. Who would be the point person if there's any questions on that?
I guess myself.
Okay. Any, any comment or any further discussion on any of those? I mean...
No, just straightforward.
Okay, school commission's on board with that. And it looks like that pretty much covers it, so... Is there anything else we need to cover in work session before we take a break? All right, let's take a break. We'll be back at 6 o'clock for the council meeting.